Circus twenty nine eight seven six. Under Jill Premontane, for sure.
thank you Chair of the Mr. President, one pro per event is a day that I have four weeks. Thank you. Do you have a little bit of a... Do you have a specific problem? Privacy act is a very important part of the same thing. The regional line? Already? It's the same.
What section twenty one, what section twenty two, or what section twenty five?
I can do that. Someone out there. Twenty two, I think it's meant to be. So the guy's a white guy, he's like with a red jacket on. There we go. Did I get all my lights on as well? Sorry, so we have the questions, the lead bit, as mentioned, called the vote on there. That can't really see that nicely. Alright, so we'll put all five of them on together. We're with three presentation delegations to have places and play, recreation and culture master plan.
There we go. Alright. Item three, presentation delegations, three, our places and play, parks, recreation, coastal master plan. Tonight, we have Mr. Paul Sudo with us, and I think Mr. Russo is gonna be here as well. So we'll pass it over to you to introduce it, and then we'll get into some questions and discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Tonight's discussion is obviously our places and play, recreation, parks and facilities master plan for the city of Beaumont. This purpose tonight is to discuss the draft master plan for informational purposes and for feedback from the members of the committee. Just a little background, council approved the recreation, parks and facility master plan in 2018 budget. The committee had a whole meeting in April seventeen, 2018. Project charter was received as information. Then August thirteenth, 2018, an update was provided on the master plan for review, feedback and informational purposes. Committee had a whole meeting November twentieth, 2018, an update was provided on our places and play for review and feedback of engagement sessions throughout the process. February nineteenth, 2019, committee whole meeting, what the earth report was presented as information for review and feedback. Parks, facility master plan allows Beaumont to strategically guide and manage the direction of recreation, parks and facilities services through 2029. The plan will also provide Beaumont with the necessary public policy framework to manage its parks, open spaces, programs, events, facilities and amenities in a cost effective manner, the system of industry practices. I do have Mr. Russo here tonight, he has a short presentation that he would like to give at a high level summary of the process to date, where we're at. If the Chair will permit.
Yeah, your bit. Thank you all. Welcome, members of the committee. It looks like a PDF document, so I think we're gonna touch it for you as opposed to...
I need to do what?
I think we're gonna have to control it. Oh, okay. Looks like a PDF document, not a PowerPoint.
I'll leave it alone then. Okay, maybe if we get to that slide then. Might have to be minimized just a bit to be able to see. Thank you. So just wanna take some time here, beginning, to go through a bit of a PowerPoint presentation, discuss the highlights of the plan, so we're all sort of on the same page. And of course, lots of opportunity for questions and discussion. As you know, the project deliverable is to provide direction to council and administration through 2029. The focus is on the next ten years, but certainly some of the direction and vision described in there will extend well beyond that into, you know, beyond ten years. We're now in phase four of the project, so that's draft master plan stage. And the second round of engagement is upcoming. And so today, we're here to discuss the draft master plan, and then phase five, of course, is the final master plan. As we know, from previous presentations, there was a wide range of community involvement throughout the establishment of the plan, and including resident input and stakeholder group input, staff input and your input and others. So we really felt that we had a really comprehensive understanding of what the needs were in the community. And you've seen this slide in previous ones, so it's been updated throughout the process to date. We've engaged over eleven hundred people in the process, so we're really happy with that engagement level. Four hundred and six people in person engagements, that's one-on-one discussions with people, as well as four hundred interviews over the phone. So that, I think, is the basis of a lot of the discussion in the master plan. Out of the engagement process, a few things rose to the top in terms of facility needs and program needs. Field houses, arenas, performing arts center and aquatics expansion certainly rose to the top in terms of indoor facility needs. Outdoor ranks, trails, sport fields and ball dines, amphitheater, dog park and green spaces rose to the top as far as outdoor facility needs go. And children and youth programming was certainly focused in a lot of the discussions we had, arts and cultural programming, and spontaneous use, meaning drop-in use of facilities and programs where you don't necessarily, residents don't necessarily need to be part of a structured group and book something, but can come and drop in and do it. The plan spends a fair amount of real estate describing what's going on in Beaumont today. It's such a dynamic community. There's so much growth happening, it's important that the plan lays that groundwork because of the needs coming forward. So that significant growth in recent years, the projected growth over the next twenty, twenty-five years being the highest in the capital region. Growth expected in Le Duke County and South Edmonton, and also contributing to the current state, as well as Beaumont having relatively high incomes and a very young population with twenty-six percent of the population fourteen years old and younger. Beaumont has an extremely high participation rate in youth sport, on par with communities upwards of thirty thousand people. And so that was a huge consideration too, as we looked at what the facility needs were and the program needs. Through our assessment, we identified that park land acquisition was also in a gap and needed some... Maybe just rewind there. And the cultural offering is hampered by facility and resource limitations. The plan also describes what tomorrow might look like in terms of what you're facing in, as far as challenges go, due in part to the rapid growth. In the next ten years, there will be significant demand for indoor and outdoor facilities. And in our view, taking no action at this stage would result in deterioration of your community's value proposition, which is a huge focus on quality of life. Throughout the whole process, we were asked individuals and community groups what their vision was for the future of recreation, parks and facilities in the community. And we chose these words specifically, based on the conversations we had. We envision and inspire Beaumont, where family, friends, neighbors and leaders encourage each other to celebrate life, follow their passion, come together as a community and have fun. So in ten years, we want to aspire to that. At the completion of the plan, Beaumont will be a hub for cultural expression, active recreation and social activity for everyone in our diverse community. Our community will flourish as it cares for and enhances special places that encourage quiet contemplation, rejuvenation and a deep connection with our natural environment. So that's what we feel will be different in the future. You're doing a lot of these things now, but we think there still is lots of room for growth, and this is sort of the desired future state. The plan describes ten guiding principles. These ten guiding principles guided some of the action items in the plan, or all the action items in the plan. We're suggesting that you utilize them as you move forward in your decision-making in the future. And maybe just in the interest of time, we won't go through all ten, but there's some important things in there around equitability to access to facilities, integration of indoor and outdoor facilities, building facilities to last and built for growth is such an important part, and ensuring that the business planning is in place and there's a recommended process for business planning in the plan. That support is provided to community groups, that those groups and citizens are engaged regularly. There's a higher degree of design and flexibility of use. The enhancement of diversity, inclusion, enhancement of the natural environment and celebrating the cultural opportunities. So those were the top ten that came through and guided the plan. There are two overarching ideas in the plan, and one is around establishing a cultural corridor, and the other is a recreation and school co-located site. This map isn't really intended to be really dissected here, it's an overall map of where the recreation, school, co-located sites could potentially occur in the future. There's three identified sites, there could be others as you implement, as well as where the cultural corridor might be placed. The next slide here zooms in a little bit more on where the cultural corridor would be identified, and also where a town square within that cultural corridor could be located. In terms of the vision for the cultural corridor, we see this as the cultural heart of the community, attracting investment and diversifying the local economy, and creating a sense of pride around the community, a celebration place, a program space, and a place that really identifies Beaumont. The vision for the recreation and school co-located site is to have a multipurpose leisure center phased in over time. The whole multipurpose leisure center wouldn't be created, of course, within the timeframe. So this plan, but identifying a site where it would be phased in and co-located with at least one school, maybe two. In that way, you can share amenities and phase in your recreation amenities over time. Example of that is the Shaw Center in Saskatoon, where there's a nice rec center in the middle of that image there, and two schools, one on either side. They're sharing amenities, sharing parking, sharing sports fields. So that co-location of site is the other sort of bigger item that we wanted to outline in the plan. The implementation plan has a hundred and forty-one action items, don't worry, they don't allow it to be done tomorrow, across four functional areas, that's the way the plan is actually organized. So maybe this next slide. Out of all of that, we had lots of discussion with administration over what the priorities are recommended moving forward. And out of all of that, we came up with eight top priority items, and the top one being land. Acquiring and sustainably managing land. Given that you have a huge opportunity, a watershed moment with the annex lands right now, and all of the development happening in the future, your projected population growth, the school developments, there's a lot to consider there. And that rose to the top by a fair margin as number one, and suggesting that you actually in the short term hire a parks and recreation land planner to really focus on that. The second one is developing a business plan for the new Beaumont Sport and Recreation Center. Again, huge opportunity, the way this facility unfolds, when it opens, is gonna set the tone for operations, for programs and facility development for years to come. So getting that right will be important. There's a host of new operational policies outlined in the plan that came in at number three. And the facility development framework is an appendix to the plan that is part of that, but also identifying the city of Beaumont as a partner in delivery. Number four was adding human resources to respond to growth. The top one, there is up to three community engagement and program officers. We heard time and time again from community groups, there needs to be more communication with them, more support for them to help them do what they do, help them grow into the future and meet some of these emerging demands that are going to be happening as you grow. So that was, came out in the top there in terms of HR, park staff additions as well. A capital projects coordinator, as we start rolling out and doing more capital project development, having out the side of the desk of an existing manager is not probably gonna work. We had trouble getting data to support decisions, so adding a business analyst would be important as well, so you can have real-time data for your managers to make real-time decisions and have a dashboard for that. And of course, facility staff for your new facility. In terms of enhancing existing facilities, upgrades to sport fields, like drainage is a big part of that, and other upgrades that are kind of really needed. That's all lumped into that upgrading existing, as well as parks and trails. We heard time and time again from the general public about outdoor amenities of parks. So this is basic things like shade, washrooms, garbage cans, all that stuff. Most of it are quick wins, actually, that would, residents, I think, would really appreciate. And then, of course, your facility lifecycle planning for your existing facilities. At six is building new high priority facilities in the short to medium term. We're suggesting some upgrades to the existing community center to make them more user-friendly for the performing and visual arts. That was a huge focus there in terms of establishing new high priority facilities. A large-scale indoor playground, which currently doesn't exist in Beaumont, also was a top one. Multipurpose space for the existing library. We know that they're at capacity with their programs, and they're doing some wonderful things over there in terms of programming, so expanding some space to be able to do that. An outdoor multi-sport court and then expansion of the trails. The next one is planning for new facilities to be developed in the medium to long term. And so actually, kind of more in the short term, is this comprehensive analysis for ice surfaces and sport fields. We see this as really taking a deep dive into what's going on right now. How much regional use is there of ice and sport fields? Is that meeting the need to a certain degree when you combine that with your new facilities coming onboard with your enhancements? And what creative ideas can the municipality and user groups and the general public work on to increase utilization and efficiency before you start building a whole bunch new? Feasibility study and a concept design, location analysis for performing arts centers in this package of services. Enhanced aquatic amenities of the existing pool and planning for the long term. At the proposed multipurpose leisure center at the co-located site, we're suggesting leave space there for aquatics, because you're gonna need it in the future. And so that's that whole guiding principle around planning for growth. Building new, no, not quite yet, building new rectangular sport fields and baseball dimes by 2029, as well as a performing arts center, one new ice surface and one new field house by 2029. And the last top priority here, and there's a bunch of other, of course, there's a lot of action items, but that was developing program plans specifically on recreation, parks and culture for each one of those, and then working on your accessibility for programs. The plan includes a ten-year capital plan that identifies order of magnitude planning or costs for capital. These are for planning purposes only, as you get deeper into this, you'll be doing much more detailed planning and getting finer point on these numbers. But it gives you a sense of when these things might be phased in over what period of time, what they would cost in general terms. Next one. And then there's the operational budget impact analysis that looks at the operating cost of the action items in the plan, and again, phased in over each year and then totaled up to 2029. So in conclusion, the plan puts forward a strategic direction and detailed action items that will guide the community towards its vision. It's recognized that the municipality is important and will lead a lot of this, but there will need to be a lot of collaboration with other orders of government, with your regional partners, with stakeholder groups, with residents in the private sector to make this reality. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So I had a couple of opening comments, and then I'll make a few statements just around the process of how I think we can make sure this conversation here is successful tonight. So first up, a big thank you to yourself and your consultancy group for pulling this all together. Some kind of feedback here from residents and user groups, that this is definitely, they felt engaged and really, really happy with where that comes from. So thank you, and also Mike, to your staff for all the effort to go through and get to this, as well as the user groups and residents. I know there's a lot of effort to attend these meetings and that sort of thing, so I think the proof is in the pudding here. And I think I can speak for council here, that we're happy with the product that is available. So I'm glad you're doing that, we've been waiting for this for a long time. But yeah, so just a general thank you, I'm sure others will jump in there. The other thing I'd wanna highlight here is that I think, you know, the whole purpose of this is to avoid, you know, we constantly hear from different community groups, residents about, we need to improve this, we need to improve that. And I'm proud that our council took the time to not just respond to these in one-offs, that we try to ground ourselves in a master plan so that we can look at the long-term needs and make decisions strategically as opposed to kind of in silos. So I thank council for putting that plan together. I think this is really showing some strong benefits here, it's gonna help us growing forward in the community. In terms of how I want the discussion to go today, I think it would be great if we go around and if there are clarifying questions about in the report, we'll go through those first. So before making any statements or comments about, you know, what you think should be priorities and that sort of thing, let's go around the room and make sure people have a chance to answer any clarifying questions. Then we'll get into more of a discussion about thoughts on how we move forward with this. But a key thing that I think is gonna be successful today to make sure that we set administration up for success here is a discussion around some of the short-term needs specifically. We've obviously got a budget process coming up, and I'd like us to be able to give some sort of direction to administration so that we can look at if there are a few key things that we wanna do, clearly a lot outlined in here. Quick wins you referenced, but if there are some key things that we want administration to consider and bring back information as part of the budget process, I think we wanna leave here tonight with that indication, not making decisions and approvals on things, but a clear indication on some key things that we think we're looking for administration to prepare so that we can consider that as part of the 2020 budget process. So how does that sound for folks around the table in terms of the process? Okay, so we'll kick it off with clarifying questions first. People have got lists of questions, but we'll go around and just open up the floor, so. I'm looking at you, Mike, you're up first.
I really only have one clarifying question on the plan. We are talking about stormwater ponds and bioponds. What's the difference between a stormwater pond and a biopond, and what would like be the finished look? Because right now, we have, we're getting our trade from totally natural to man-made, which our residents like to use as recreational spaces, and so we want with that.
Right, our landscape architects really saw a huge diversity, like I think what you're describing there in terms of the way you're treating stormwater management ponds right now. Some are fairly stark and really isn't much vegetation around, not much active or passive recreation around them, and others are done quite a bit better, I guess, in terms of their ecological and recreational value. So we're saying in the plan to sort of standardize that up the game overall, and have more vegetation planted, more passive recreation, like trails around the outsides of them, and creating a situation that really has a higher ecological and recreational value.
Is there a way to turn those stormwater ponds into usable water for residents? Because I know that one, that question comes up very often. Yeah, if you get the safety, you have to talk from planning. Is there a way to do?
Water features?
Yeah, so like they can go swimming in, or put a boat. Would make it safe enough to do it.
Yeah, we didn't get into any great detail on that in the plan. So I mean, that might be something we could look at with our landscape architects and include in the next draft.
Counsel, step.
I just wanted to, if I can find it, there's definition of storm ponds at the end. I was hoping for a clarification on the difference between bioponds and storm ponds too, because I'm not quite sure what the difference is. There's a definition which I now cannot find.
I can come back to you.
Yeah.
Counsel Barnhart.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. As Counselor Marco Swain has said, it's a lot of work, and it does give us that big picture. So I'm gonna stay up there for a while and not get into the weeds, yeah? But I understand all the questions that are gonna come. But I understand all the questions that are going to come. When I looked at this, it was a bit overwhelming for sure in terms of 141 action plans, 51 initiatives or something like that. It's huge. And it is difficult to not go right into the ones that we understand and take the whole thing under consideration. So the question I want to ask you is whether this size of a plan and this many details, a lot of it is catch-up because we grow so fast, does it seem reasonable that like from your own work, and I've done lots of municipalities, does this size and scope over 10 years make sense? Like it just, I'd love to have all of that in 10 years, but I just, I mean, it feels like, I don't think we can.
Yeah, I can appreciate, I can appreciate that. It's a long document and hopefully it didn't put you asleep.
No, I stayed away through the whole thing.
And with your current staff load, no, it's not possible, but we are recommending a fairly, for a significant bump in your administration.
But that's again, the question, is that a reasonable expectation for a community this size, for a city this size? I guess from my other experience, I'm wondering if we're not taking what bigger cities have and trying to make everything available here to give the size of the community. I just wonder how, you know, is there some benchmark or some way we can look at that and rationalize why this is a feasible plan? Because that's where I got caught up.
Yeah, I'll speak to that a little bit. I looked at this plan in a couple of different ways. One was the long range thought on the capital side for entities and facilities and whatnot. But there's a lot of operational recommendations that live in here and strategically and both strategically and operationally, we, there's a lot in here we're kind of already thinking about and it really assists us just moving forward year by year. And I think we just work that way year by year as opposed to thinking the big picture of everything. It's broken down enough in there that it gives us some steps and will really assist us when it comes to planning every year for budgets. So I do think that on the 10-year part, capital wise, the big picture items, yes, it seems a little overwhelming, but if we break it down day to day as we do in our departments, a lot of this is quite manageable.
Just a good idea, one second. When you say, you know, and I know we're catching up because of the speed of the trade alone. Administically, are some of those positions going to help in areas other than recreational parks or are these positions they're recommending solely for this? Because again, that might help us in terms of seeing the bigger, bigger picture in terms of all of the other needs that we have.
I think it opens a discussion for some of the staff we have currently and some maybe different, maybe some crossover there on some of these positions and some of the work that's outlined in here. And I think we have to look at that as a yearly basis. I would suggest that we would just have to go higher up actually initially. I think we have to look at what they're doing now and what ties into this plan and if there is overlap, how does that work?
Yeah, my comment to that will be, and you made the point, it's going to take investment for sure, right? And I think it's not something that we can, you know, ask operationally, can you cut a little bit here? Like we need to make a significant decision ultimately, are we going to invest in recreation? My personal opinion and culture, my personal opinion is if we don't, we're going to, we're going to see that growth drop off. People, if you can't, if you can't, we can't provide the programming, the arts facilities, the sports facilities that we want here for community, people aren't going to come here or they're going to leave, right? We hear that constantly. So personally, I think, I get it's a huge, and I'm not saying you don't, agreeing with that comment.
No, I don't think we're debating yet.
No, but I think.
We're just asking questions.
Yeah, yeah, so for me, we can't afford not to invest in this piece. So I get, I get the question, I appreciate their response back as well. I would agree that's something that we need to look forward to. Counselor Deloitte? Oh, sorry.
Just a couple bigger picture comments besides good job. A couple of times you've been before us in the past and I've commented a lot outside of chambers as well, the engagement on this is very well done. The number of people and groups that you were able to accomplish and get to and be persistent to make sure that you meet up with, I think that was as important as anything to make sure that we do get that feedback, not just we asked and they didn't respond. I think that was awesome. So thank you for that. That's one. Two big picture things that spoke to me was the Roman bad thing on the side of his weight in sports enrollment comparing itself to 30,000 plus population municipalities. So that spoke, you know, we're starting a little chart on page 55 that says, you know, we have 1,236 apartments in soccer and Okato's who's 10,000 more than us says 1265, you know, and the new with 11,000 or more has 1,000, right? You know, so those numbers permeate through. So that was aha moment. I thought that that could be the case, but never would have seen the numbers come.
It's dramatic, yes.
It is, for sure it is. I think the second piece that stood out to me is a little bit more of a detailed thing, but just the rectangular field and baseball diamond deficit when compared to others. You always hear that, and that was page 58, there's a nice little chart there as well. You know, you always hear we need more, we need more. And sure, we do, but when you, you know, when you look at what other communities have there, you know, there's quite deficit when you, you know, look at those two lines. Yes, there's some other things too, but you know, that's just what stood out for me. So that's a couple of big picture things for myself and happy to get into the details when it brings it forward, so.
Counselor Deloitte?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Justin, again, thanks for your work here. This report, I read it, I read it once very slowly and it was overwhelming information and a couple of times after that and it's awesome information. The biggest that strikes me, as the governor mentioned before, is that we are a very unique community in that we have an abnormally high level of kids under the age of 15. And it speaks of these pages here that we can't compare ourselves other than location because they don't have our growth problem that we have. And it's a very unique problem to be in, it's a conundrum, right? Because as councillor, that Nick mentioned a moment ago, on that page 55, for example, briefly, I'll give my comment quickly here, is that, you know, 17,000 in 2016 versus Okato's and the Duke almost 13, you know, that their tax base is much bigger than ours and they can afford to build bigger things than we have, but we have higher needs than they have. So it's a odd situation to be in. So it's tough for our council going forward to figure what we need to do. But may I ask you a quick question on page 116 of the document? One of the recommendations with, I may get that quickly, is identifying some gaps in operational policies. Could you be expanded briefly on the context? I've read it a couple of times, I forget what you're referring to, but it's more of a programming type of gap. You're talking here about, if I may, implement a record keeping system for amenities, developing space allocation policies as well as that does addressing gaps in municipal stakeholders. So can you expand on what that section's about, the gaps in community?
Yeah, well, at the present time, there isn't really a clear policy around allocation. So as to what types of group will get what facilities under what conditions? As you continue to grow and give even more demand, there's going to be more pressure upon the facilities. We also heard from the public that not only user groups are wanting the space, but drop in like the general public. And definitely we see the role of the municipality to not only meet the needs of user groups, but also the general public who were heard through this process. So what, at what stage or what priority does general public get on prime time ice, for example, for drop-in use for, or sport fields or the other facilities versus user groups and in what condition? So there is some work to do there to really nail it down. Also some booking software and processes to make sure that the facilities are used to their utmost and most efficient way. We did hear, we weren't able to verify this necessarily, that there is some open space out in fields, for example, that otherwise would be booked if there was a better system. And so that's where that came from. That was input that we received from user groups and the public, they're seeing open space that's not being used even in prime time. So there are a few core policies that you, normally a city of this size would have in place, but you don't have it in place and that's why the list is so long of to-dos.
Get this helping, thank you.
Was there any clarifying, yeah, Counselor Steph?
Comment, general comments, or do you want me to go get specific?
Uh, general, uh, specific questions first and then we'll get into comments.
Okay. Specific question was the, was the stormwater bio pond thing that I, I'm looking at page 17119 in appendix F. Now, appendix F is Parkland Acquisition Guidelines. Number point seven there, there's a limited non-park infrastructure. First bullet point says stormwater detention ponds that preclude public use should not be considered park space. So there is some scope in here for having stormwater ponds that aren't parks, but you alluded to as well the bio ponds with, that were parks that had trails around them or whatever. All I'm looking for really is a distinction between what constitutes a stormwater pond that is therefore not a, is not a bio pond or a recreational pond.
You know, maybe in the, in the next iteration of, I can go back to landscape architects and get them to explain that a little bit better in there for you, if, because I might not do it justice. So in terms of the, the classification system, the feedback we were getting was that at times the parks sort of got leftover land at the development process.
Yes.
And that that is the real driver force behind this to make sure there's high quality recreation land available, that it's intentional and deliberate in how it's being acquired and that there's recreational and ecological value to those lands. So, but if, if the bio pond thing isn't explained enough in there, we can, we can do a better job of that.
Yeah, I, yeah, for me, I think that's, that's an area that needs a little more definition.
Okay, I got one question, then I have Bill, sorry, Counselor Deloitte and Counselor Barnhart. You speak about a second round of engagement or the next round of engagement. So let me be clear, I think this, this whole process, it's going to be an ongoing iterative engagement process, but I'm surprised that you're, you're going to be entering into another round. So I wonder if you could provide some clarity on that? Like we've mentioned how much engagement has occurred before us, we've got this document here, I think it's time for council to start making some decisions. So what, what, what is the intention behind that second round of engagement specific to the plan?
Well, the original project plan identified us going back to the public after the draft plan stage to touch bases with, with the public to show them the recommendations and see if there's any red flags or any, any major changes that need to happen before the final plan is developed. So this step here was to review with council before we went back to the public and showed them this. I mean, it's in your plan, I mean, it's public document now. So before we go and have some discussions with user groups and with the public and what will that entail, was originally planned to entail is pop-up displays at facilities like you did last time. It won't be near the scope, it's more of a touch base.
Yeah.
Uh, pop-up displays and maybe some discussions with any stakeholder groups that want to talk to us.
Yeah, and thank you for that clarification. I think this is going to be an iterative process over, over the 10 years. Are we going to be checking with the, with the community as we go? I guess maybe to get your perspective on, this is a draft plan, but would, would preclude council from making decisions around some of, some of these sort of things? Would that be a fair statement?
It would be, yeah. I mean, I think there's some things, you know, we need to do and you're probably already working on. This is just a quick check, check-in with the public and, and I think you're going to probably need to be doing that more regularly anyway because there's so much in here, you're growing so fast. Like this is, this is, this is something we'd normally see this amount of activity like over maybe 20 years because of your growth, it expedites everything, right? So you're going to probably need to go back a little bit more regularly than you'd normally see in a master plan.
Yeah.
And then do those check-ins.
And I think that's the key thing that all the council was interested in is we don't want to spend the time and money investing and getting this and then have a good discussion here today, maybe a couple of follow-ups and then it's sitting in a corner. Because I know councillor Hendricks can probably attest to doing this around a few times. So trying to get some, interested in some discussion about how do we, your thoughts on how we keep this fresh, how we keep going back on that. So I think I'll save that discussion for a little bit later. I know my fellow councillors have got some comments, but appreciated your comment about the need to keep going back to the community. So Counselor Deloitte, followed by Counselor Barnhart?
Thank you. My question goes around to the actual engagement itself. We, you engage through a 30 organization, which is phenomenal in terms of, goes transparency or we try to talk to everybody we possibly can. My question revolves around how would these groups engage in terms of how you engage their conversation? For example, the adult drop-in pickleball club, I guess we have one in town, I didn't know until now. So when you engage them versus say the soccer association or the try and swim club, did you engage in the same way? Did you have three or four questions for each group? Pre-done or how, a quick overview of how that was done and how you can see the second round of engagement, would it be, you asked that question part of the recording for me, would be any sort of surfing done, I'm assuming, but how were the first initial contact with these groups made?
Well, there was a letter that went out to stakeholder groups outlining all the different engagement opportunities, including the group meetings, like the group stakeholder meetings where we went through a presentation that described the process and then went into some questions around facility and program needs and then sort of a swath around what's working and not working. And some, we also during that, in that letter, we offered the opportunity for board presentations. So those groups that wanted myself to come and present to the board, we made ourselves available to do that and a few groups took us up on that. And we would ask, we, essentially the same questions, facility, program needs. And then some interviews as well, that we even made that opportunity available and we did some interviews, again, same line of questioning. So it was consistent.
Good, thank you. Counselor Barnhart?
Thank you, Chair. Just a few, would you help me elaborate a little bit on what is meant by in the vision and the division from the recreational plan about leaders? Because it talks about leaders and doesn't really mention businesses. I'm wondering why the term leaders was used there?
Might have to look at that again.
I think it was within the scope of this project, it wasn't something that was included.
Page?
Page 101. So the division for the plan for recreational culture, parks and culture. Leadership for all our family, friends, neighbors and leaders. I thought it was interesting, but I didn't know thinking it like that.
We wanted that, I think, to be broader than just municipal, but all leaders in the community to make it an all-encompassing statement around leadership and we didn't want to lose that part of it, but.
Were businesses included in any of the stakeholder sessions?
Were specific business groups represented? I'd have to check the, I'd have to check whether they attended or not. I have to look at the list. I don't think the.
The reason I would say that is I think sponsorship is very important when it comes to some of the facilities we're looking at.
Yeah.
And as well the engagement of our, we've got great businesses that support our community groups. So I would like to see that if there's further engagement, I'd be.
We're certainly invited.
I, sometimes it takes a little more encouragement because it's not necessarily in their, their business, but I think they have a lot to offer in terms of helping and we're ready.
Thank you, Counselor Deloitte.
Thank you. Yes, I'll listen to the sponsorship. I noticed the example given in the, of the school colocation side, that that was the shore center. Thinking that there might be some sponsorship involved there to even the example given, yes, I'm, I'm, it's crucial. Question I actually wanted to ask was a different one there. The, last year, the library board presented to council a plan or a proposal, a study, let's say, for the expansion of the library, which as you noted is, needs to be expanded fairly drastically in order to meet the, the increasing size of the, of the city as it grows. And they proposed that building over there, to expand that building. And I think they were talking about, if I remember correctly, about an $18 billion expansion plan. I noticed that's not included in, or at least I can't find a reference to it in the document. Is that excluded because it would be a completely separate thing or is there some reason it's not in the plan?
Within the 10-year timeframe, I think that, that study looked quite far out.
Yes.
You know, like 20 years. Within the timeframe of this plan, we felt that what rose to the top was multipurpose space to do more programming. And that was through this round of engagement, like in terms of like a new library or a fully expanded library, it didn't rise to the top as a top priority through our engagement.
Okay, so that was a low priority. So if that changed in the course of the next 10 years, that would be something we would need to add.
Definitely, yeah. You don't need to evaluate this every year and some things will add it and some things will be dropped off depending on the needs?
Because, yeah, the case was actually made that the library as it exists today is undersized for the, for the population that it serves to meet the library standards of excellence, which was set as a goal. So I'm thinking that we may have to reconsider that, the prioritization. So I'm thinking that we may have to reconsider that, the, the prioritization of that.
Just on that same one, I went looking for that as, as well, having sent a library board during that time. And 2A6 talks about supporting an expanded library space, which sounds to me like we would invest in this building rather than... And, and I guess that's something to be debated for sure, because if we're spending money on an expansion that we don't see the need for, we need to see the need for new facility, then, you know, we'd have to have that debate.
Our second library, which I suppose could be one of the, it's the, the school side, uh, co-location type, type endeavors. Uh, that, yeah, that's, that's, the capital cost assigned to that, I think, is, if I'm reading the right thing, 2A6 was 1.2 million, so that's not the, that's not an $18 million expansion, no.
No, that's just for extra program space.
Yes. Thank you.
Any discussion on the library, uh, Council Steve Van Newkirk has a comment. Go ahead, Chair.
Sure, Steve, if you can, sure. Can you talk to us more, a little more with the cultural corridor? It's a, it's a big idea put out at the beginning of the document. And then, I think it seems to leave steam as you go in, but I think it loses its equal purpose because it takes a whole bunch of bits and pieces to bring that cultural order to life. Can you be able to speak to that a little bit? And I wonder if there's an example of something like that in action somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of, there's lots of examples of excellent town squares and, um, zones that are identified for, uh, cultural expression. Uh, and really it's about encouraging mixed-use development where we would, it would be park space and public use space, but also encouraging private development, commercial development, residential, uh, all to increase, um, the sort of cultural capital of the community, tie in with your brand to, um, for residents and for visitors and to be a celebration space. Uh, so around that could be programming, could be policy development, facility development. Certainly the suggestion of a town square, uh, which is a central meeting space. And I think the city's already kind of proven the need for that and city celebration and other celebrations, um, where people want to be in your downtown, um, and they see value in your downtown. There certainly is some precedent for that, uh, in other communities and, and even in your community. So it's really a multifaceted approach to, uh, encouraging cultural expression in your downtown.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of that. One of the, uh, one of the challenges with that is there's already existing stuff there, right? And so it's one of those things that, uh, changes over time and changes with time. And, uh, you know, encourage, you know, business ABC or wish that ABC would come in there, but it might not come through wishes. So, um, I like the idea of it for sure. And I just wonder, you know, if we decided that that was something you're going to do and you're quite willing that, you know, there's a whole bunch of working that goes into creating an environment that will allow that to manifest. Because you don't just say this is what we're going to do. There's so much that goes into framing everything to make this appear, right?
That's right.
You don't just say, I'm going to build a cultural corridor, it doesn't work that way.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a whole host of things that would need to happen for sure.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, I think we're exhausted the clarifying questions on the report and, um, thank you for, for answering those. Um, but, uh, as mentioned, we'll get into some of the more specifics, um, that, that people have to, to chat about. Um, so I'll open up the floor to any specifics, so I'll go to Councilor Van Newkirk. Sorry, I should, I should also, um, comment that, um, what we will do, what I'll try and manage this here is if you bring up a thought, an idea, a facility-type, uh, conversation, we'll try and close that off before we move on. So I'll ask for others, people around the room, if they've got comments, thoughts around that particular one, so we don't have to keep going back and revisiting it. Uh, and if you could just identify the page number you're speaking to, if we push it, go ahead.
I was going to start early with the document at PCT, Master Plan, sorry. Uh, starting number one, on the acquiring sustainably managed land. This question, I guess, I'll oppose to admit first would be, you know, what ability do we have to purchase land around us? You know, when it comes to municipality going to buy land, um, a lot of land surrounding a lot, I will speculate has a speculative value associated with it at this point and, uh, you know, is probably above market value. Is this, uh, is a municipality even allowed to entertain thoughts of acquiring that land? That would be the first question.
Councilor Van Newkirk? Chair, uh, certainly, uh, we're, we can go on the real estate market just like anybody else. Uh, there's no restrictions, of course, we are spending the taxpayers' money, so we have to try and get the best price that we can. Where there is a restriction, uh, is sale of land. We're unable to sell land below market value without advertising. Now, market value is very difficult to nail down. It's what, you know, the actual worth is, is as far as, uh, who sets that. It, it's tough, it's what the real estate market will, uh, will support.
That's right.
But there's no restriction.
That's right, the gold one is expensive, that's, that's where it's at. So that was, I guess, the first point I wanted to make. And then the second point around that is that, uh, you know, just to remind everyone in the country, council recalls, but we do have, you know, we do have a piece of land that was put aside by the previous council, um, that we're currently still paying for, that's the way things work, um, you know, to, to do. And we do have that piece of land and we have some land internally on the south side that was identified in a, in a previous meeting. Uh, so, you know, so we do have some land, uh, to do some things, but it was interesting to me that the number one priority was to acquire and sustainably manage land. Of course, that would be great, but I, I see this one being very hard to do, uh, more financially stretched and it's typical and buy X number of acres, one is $90 and, uh, you know, we already have a five-year and 10-year plan for it, so... Anyway, I'll stop there, but it's, it's a lot.
Yeah.
It is expensive, so...
My two cents on, on that is, I, I agree, it's definitely the priority, but it's going to be hard to do. So I think, um, some of the shorter-term things we can look to do is identifying the existing land that we do have and put in some capital towards that to helping the short-term needs, um, but definitely understand the need for that long-term. I'm sorry, John, uh, you worship, you want to jump?
I'm just going to call you first names from now. John.
Well, actually, I was going down this vein with the 80 acres that we already have. And so I was really surprised actually when we, this plan came out and it talked about acquiring land. Would we have to perfectly do 80 acres that we already own? That if we programmed it correctly, we could put all these needs on that land somehow and facilitate and get rid of the, there's a whole bunch of feasibility studies and other things, that if we just made the decision as a council that that's the recreation, that 80 acres we're going to use for recreation and we can start working on some concepts on, that'd be possible to school, the, uh, the, uh, park space. And then face that over 10, 15, five, 10, 15, 20 years. That would seriously go a long way to jumpstart it and it, you just utilize the resources we already have. So we don't have to go buy land, we don't even have to look at it. We have 80 acres, which if used correctly, will satisfy these needs over the next 10, 15, 20 years. And so I, I was really hoping that we could, could, uh, yeah, refocus this plan away from acquiring land to utilization of the 80 acres that we have and how do we plan that out to maximize the amount of facilities that we're identifying.
Yeah, great, great comment. I'd like to hear council's thoughts on this, I think everyone here knows, I'll go to Council Hendricks next. Everyone knows, um, my thoughts on this, I, you know, before when we're talking about that aquifer expansion, uh, you know, we had this discussion at the time, um, council wasn't there, but, um, for the need to, to get it ahead and approved and the delays that that would take. But, I mean, the, the fact that we have that land, I think, is, is an incredible asset for us. Um, and so I think we need to, we, I, I would agree with your comment about shifting that, that priority. And if we identify that as a council, um, we need to obviously engage the developers and all this stuff that, that is out there and the infrastructure costs, et cetera. But I would certainly support that conversation, Councilor Hendricks.
Yeah, and I'd take us back to the MDP, that's already been somewhat approved and certainly the planning continues to go with that and the missed reserves that we tend to get as part of our agreements with our developers and then how we match those up. And we do, we best sometimes we back on MRs, right regarding, you know, infrastructure plans, uh, how did we get the, uh, the land that we, uh, face to, who's currently sitting on is essentially that way. You know, acquire larger quantities of land. And we have, uh, plates where that, that entire piece, that's been developed through acquisition of MR and money. So there's other ways to get land, sort of having to write a check. Our planning department's, I think, doing an extra job making sure that, you know, we're not getting little pockets of dirt in terms of land, but we're actually getting combined pieces to really turn it into something.
Yeah, and, and going back to the land west of town, uh, here, I think, you know, when you, when you see it from the map that, that was presented to us, I can't remember the acronym, um, uh, that we're in terms of a planning perspective, but you see it and they've got the, the town kind of square up and then a little bit down the back. But ultimately that, a lot of that is chewing up in that 80 acres. Uh, and so if, if council thinks that, you know, this 80 acres is where we plan everything, then I think we, we should start having those discussions earlier on so that we can direct planning to, to go that route. So would you be supportive of that, of those types of...
Absolutely, and, you know, I, I think with this planning document and, and yay, uh, thank you for this, lots of energy's gone into this, hopefully this will, will stick. This isn't the first one we've had where, you know, the planning doesn't turn into actions. This has to keep moving. Uh, this is either going to be a roadmap or an explanation at some point, you know, as to why we didn't get there or why we did get there. So we have to be energy into it and get this done. And then we basically lay it out, we map it out in terms of timing, we map it out in terms of money, you know, and our growth and, and hopefully stick with it. But of course, every council is, you know, it's got its right to do as wishes and, you know, the, the previous document that supported exactly the same issues just didn't follow it, so...
Yep.
And now we've got this explaining what happened to the last one, so we have to get started and start putting energy in it. So I wouldn't take any energy out of this. If it's 10 years, then let's go, let's get this done.
Okay, thank you. I got, Councilor Stapp?
A quick comment, I think it's a lot easier for, for the next councils coming after us to stick to the plan if we've already mapped it and put a phase document together and get it back to that. Yeah, give them a roadmap, they can't deviate, it would be hard to deviate.
Right. Politically tough to deviate from.
Politically tough to deviate from.
Uh, Council Stapp?
And, and it becomes financially tough as well because you're, you're going to have to spend some more money. If we can build all this on land we already have, then, then there's, or mostly, then there's no need to acquire more land. Which basically, I'd support what you suggested doing on land we already have if we possibly can. Um, my only comment was then that, that that does then change some of the, the conceptual use diagrams for science of things, right? A little bit, not overly. The stage of the plan is the best to be doing, yes? So it's appropriate that we do it now, if, if that's, if that's the will of council.
Yeah, so what else, we're sort of, I'm jumping in.
Maybe if I could just clarify, that word acquire doesn't necessarily mean buy. But there, there are some, there's some discussion in the plan about what that word means. It could mean a whole host of things, it could mean your existing land that you had, it could mean trading land with other parcels. But I would caution against identifying specific locations at this stage. Location analysis is a whole nother process. Uh, and we actually have in the document, um, some criteria on, on identifying locations for rec facilities. And, uh, and so that, that, there'll be, need to be a fair amount of consideration there before you land on a location.
So I think, I think what you're hearing from council here is, um, we, we see the need for this, we've got the space and, and I take your point, um, but what we don't want to see is another 18 months, two years to plan this out, right? Like we, we've got the report that says what we need, we've got some space. So how do we turn this into an actionable plan, I guess, is, is what, what the, what I'm hearing, the temperature of council here. And maybe this goes back to planning, you're, you're right, you don't want, you don't want council to sit here and want to say, okay, we want to do it there. You've got to go through the process, but maybe you could speak a little bit about, from your experience, and then I'll throw planning as well into this. How do we, how do we take the conversation and the, the, the direction that council is looking to go? How do you move that into an actionable plan so that, uh, we give clear direction for administration's sake? When these things come up, this is, this is where we want to put our, our time and capital. So thoughts on, on how, the process around doing that?
It, this, the, the whole, uh, document is going to be, needed to be put into an operational plan that your administration is going to be responsible for and then bring to you for approval. My assumption is that, now, you guys...
No.
No? Okay, so how would, how would you respond to that?
Operational plans don't come to council.
Okay.
Well, your master plans are always high-level documents that have steps for implementation, regardless of what master plan it is, transportation master plan, private master plan. If you had identified that you wanted to focus on this 80, in this master plan, it would point to that being a priority focus on 80. Start looking at scoping out the cost of servicing and what you would put on that, it's a different project and how to scope for this project. So that's something that would be brought to budget with another amount of money attached to that. We'd have some work done on that.
Yeah, so a couple of quick comments. I don't know how, I don't know how many of the user groups' residents would number them out, that the fact that we own that. So I think that's to be part of the reason why it didn't, didn't come up. But clearly the report identifies we've got a lack of land, we've got a lack of infrastructure facilities, right? And so what you're hearing, council is saying, you know, we've got this space, is it feasible to do that? So I appreciate it, we're not going to go back and edit this report to go into it, it's, it's a separate conversation. Uh, I'm looking for more of a, a discussion around how, how do we, how do we, now you're hearing a bit of temperature around this, obviously a lot more discussion to have, but how do we turn that into an actual plan? You, you mentioned it's got to go into operational plan, I think, you know, that word has some different connotations, but how, how do we move that so that council can look at this and say, yeah, this is the direction we want to go?
So, I, I fear that you're not going to get the answer that you're looking for in a master plan because the master plan is going to, like, if you choose and you say, hey, I think this would be a great idea that you would want to explore more, then you could identify that as one of the action items, like at the top of the list that you want to look at as an implementation of this plan. And then the next step would not be an operational plan, it would be bringing it to budget, saying that this is a project that we want to do in 2020, including costing it out. It all depends on what kind of recreational facilities that you want up there. Like if they were simple, uh, facilities with no water or sewer, that's a lot cheaper than if we're pulling water and sewer out there and then what happens?
Yeah, thank you. And to, to be clear, I couldn't tell which document it comes in, if it's in the master plan or not. Um, but you, you answered my question, that's the process, right? Um, and so that's another discussion that, that we can have, so thank you for that. Sorry, Council Barra?
Just want to make sure that by, perhaps, I, I think the temperature is there to move in that direction, I'm not against that. But I don't want to lose sight of the needs of the existing community as well. So I, I don't know how to, how to say it, but I'm telling you, like, I'm not trying to, to say anything different than what you've said already, but if land is needed, which I think it is, in the short term, to deal with some of the unmet needs, whether it be for football fields or soccer fields or whatever that might be, I don't want, and I'm only guessing, that's why it's up another one. Like I don't want that to not be addressed in the short term because we're putting all our eggs in this basket, I don't want this basket to be empty, so I'm just trying to balance that out.
Couldn't agree more, that's a long-term discussion, there's definitely going to be a lot of short-term needs that can be identified early as part of the discussion.
I don't want to lose it from this because I'm afraid if we don't have it in the plan, it's telling administration that's not a priority and I, I think the existing community needs more.
Absolutely, couldn't agree more.
Yeah, no, and I agree, yeah, but the reality is, is we either buy it or we wait for it to come from developers. You know, for the, for the existing community, so we, we're, we're kind of land conscious. Like, we just...
Within the bounds of annexed lands is what you're talking about.
Yes. And the, the stuff that's coming in the annexed land has to wait for developments to come in the form of, to be subdivided to come in the form of a landmark. Um, and I think, I think we do have enough land around it within the boundaries that we could take care of some of it. But honestly, I think if we, if we put as an action item, program in that 80 acres in the next year's budget, we could take all of these current needs and some of it, like, we don't have to build all the facilities all at once. We could build a stock building, a ball diamond out there, which don't need sewer, don't need water, can get away with gravel road for a while and just base it over time.
I think, so what Council Barra is saying is that there, there are some specific key action items that we can do here, upgrades to the CC-BCC to help from our program. There is space here in the community that we can amend or change and turn it into a ball diamond or what, or however, right? So not losing sight of that, so I think that's, that's one of the things we're going to do. But there are some easy, easy is the wrong word, there are some quick things that we can do here to, to supplement the need, right? Putting shade over some of these parks, right? Like you said, um, you know, just garbage management, these are the things that we don't want to lose sight of. If we put all of our energy into this, you know, exciting big thing out here, let's take, make sure we take care of, I think, is that what?
Well, and, and what the mayor said is, is something, you know, I, I need to know. We don't have, if, if we have immediate needs, we don't have enough land for, I think we need that in our strategic plan. Because, you know, the people that are here now deserve to have as many amenities as we can afford to give them.
And that's what the rub is going to be?
Not be waiting 40 years.
Yeah, we don't have unlimited resources, where are we going to put our capital? So that's the...
So it's a bit of both is what I'm saying.
Absolutely. Councillor Henry.
Are we still on that subject or?
Yeah, I think it's worth asking, worth asking around council, is this something that we'd like administration to, to bring back as part of the budget process of what that would potentially look like?
I'll, I'll come up on that and start something new after. And so, you know, if we look at number one, it says acquire sustainably managed land. So we have that land. So I think the sustainably managed land part of that piece going into some planning for, for that parcel and understanding what we, what our needs could be in that space or something that we have to do. You know, we, we own the land. Now we're going to do something with it. Let's define what that something is. If it is taking that, that, you know, that vertical piece and portioning it off and saying this will go here, that will go there, this will go here, this is a potential phase. If we did this first, there's less services required. Services becoming year three for this facility. Like if we get a little bit of a little bit of what that could look like, I feel it might help the discussion progress in a more phased approach. So that's, you know, that's how I'm summarizing what I'm hearing.
Councillor Hendrick.
Right. And that's, that's what we turn to the admin for and say, hey, how do we get there? On all the asks, the low hanging fruit, all the items that are simple and maybe don't have a lot of money attached to it to, you know, to get after those. So and, and to your point, what the infrastructure, all the parts, pieces that go with it, uh, you know, we don't know. Our admin does. And I look forward to getting a report that kind of speaks to, hey, well, this report is live and in color. What do we bring in the budget that we can handle immediately without issue?
Bingo. So administration, Mike, um, do you have enough, we kind of talked around it a little bit here, but do, do you have enough that so you can go away and, and, and sorry, Paul as well, go away to, to present this as, as part of one of the things, right? And we'll have to weigh up and prioritize it. But do you have enough information for what we're talking about down in that annex land?
Yeah, I, I certainly feel we have enough. I mean, some of the quick wins are very easy for us operationally. For twenty twenty, for example, whether it's the policy, the completion policy, whether it's uh for those community engagement with groups and stuff like that. Those are easy wins for us. Uh and just this number one here, the way I read that and I look through some of the stuff that's in the green box is more of a strategic approach to any opportunity that may be given, putting greater space for most, I guess, in your thought process, whether it comes to planning or acquiring lands or whatever. Presents the opportunity. I think that's steering the vision to, to look at it that way, rather than getting it as an afterthought as well. So we haven't got pocket parks or built invisible spaces going forward. It's a priority when you look at an area structure plan or a development plan, whatever it is. Or that would be number one from our perspective.
Okay, I appreciate you saying that. If that's your role, I'm sure the other people around here want to top the list, but I, I get that. Mike?
Just want to build off of what Paul was saying. Uh if there are any specifics at this table that you want us to bring back, I, I hope we can identify those tonight, high level or certainly earlier on in the budget because there's some ideas outside of what Paul was just referring to. When I look at, as far as this plan's concerned, I look at this ten year, very high level, hundred million dollar capital. None of that includes the acquisition of land and none of it includes the, of the retrofits of Ken Nicole or the CC BCC over that ten years. So that, you know, it's, it's a, it's a chunk of a price tag. There's going to be a lot of effort into raising funds for that.
Yeah, so I think what you're hearing is that council would like to see something at budget about um what would take, what it would cost, resource, et cetera, for um to, to plan uh in that annex land. Is that? And we'll, we'll talk about, you know, whether we think the twenty twenty budget is the right time to be able to execute that. But um is that, is that a lot of work to, to be able to pull that together? I think that's a discussion that council wants to have. Um and whether we choose to go ahead with it or not.
So did you mean annex land to eighty acres?
Eighty acres.
Okay.
What, what are you, are you suggesting just infrastructure, like servicing?
No, I'm asking, we, I think, how do I summarize this? Council's got an appetite to look at what are we going to do with that eighty acres there. We'd like something to come back from administration to say, these are some of the options. This is kind of the cost to, to go down this road further. Do you want us, do you, give us direction? Do you want us to go down this road further?
Put some concepts together.
That's a, yeah, when you look at it as a conceptual design, that's going to take time, energy and money. That's quite a big ask.
And that's what we're trying to clarify here. If it's a big ask, it's, what's the best, we, we want to have this discussion, right? And if it doesn't, if it doesn't make it for twenty twenty, right, does it?
And we, what we would have to do, what we would, we would do it is bring back budget as, as, as a budget to do that. The design phase for twenty twenty. No, we could do that.
And we can have that discussion.
So I think what we're asking then is bring that back at budget time.
Sure, we can do that.
Okay.
Would we bring it back at budget time specifically?
A budget to be able to look at concepts for you.
Okay, thank you.
So that we, as us, we're going to spend the budget.
Yeah, another lot of short term conversations, but I think we're, we're wrapped on that one. Did you, your next councillor?
And I think it's a logical place to go. Uh there's a budget cycle coming up and, uh, you know, there are some, you know, number five. I'm not gonna, I'm not glossing over two, three and four because there are all other discussions I'm going to have tonight. But I think the next discussion we should have is around the fact we have budget cycle coming up and um I don't want to waste the opportunity to get some of the short term wins identified and then moving forward. So, um, you know, I'd like to open up my purpose to get that discussion around here. You know, we heard from, uh, the presenter from Mr Russo about, you know, some of the shelters, some benches, technical cables, small shelters. Like a focus on enhancing our existing facilities, working with what we have. Um, you know, there are some amenities that were, that are highlighted in here that residents have noticed that would be very helpful in the short term. And, you know, to, to put a, you know, to say we can work and allocate X number of dollars to do, you know, four parts outfitting. There's, there's big, uh, there's big wins in that for, for the community. You know, there, you know, all of a sudden, the usability of, um, you know, some of the structures and places that people go to around town improves drastically. Um, how do you prioritize that? I don't know. I'd like to have that discussion here is, you know, what, what are we going to enhance and what are we going to enhance it with? There's just a school of ideas. Maybe administration needs to tell us what some of that looks like. But I'd like to hear, you know, sorry, I can't be something in chair. I'm not meaning to do that. But it's like to hear what everyone is, what's thinking of those around that. I have some ideas, but.
Yeah, so I, I would put back to you, you brought it up, so I'll put you back on the spot. Uh in, in order for administration to bring, again, what we're trying to do here is give them direction to bring these types forward through the budget process, the twenty twenty budget process, right? That's what you're asking for.
For sure, yeah.
So um we're not going to go through and, and talk about every, do you want a park bench in this park here, a garbage can there? Um but generally, what were you thinking?
Yeah, if, if we could pick, if we could target some areas or some parks, um, understanding where people go and where people spend their time and determine which are the best, the best places to invest that capital in the next budget cycle to make some of the, you know, enhancements that were, that were outlined in the document. I would say, what are the best targets?
Yeah, so would it be fair to say you're prepared to entertain a discussion, put aside a, a chunk of money to, to improve some of the, the existing infrastructure?
That's right, you know, you know, be it, you know, whatever chunk, let's talk in fifty grand, are we talking two hundred grand, two hundred and fifty grand? You know, let, let's see what some of those targets look like. Let's target the places that people are going and where the most traffic is. And let's look in here for the details on what do people, what do people talk about wanting around the volleyball court or four seasons, you know, administration can bat that around. What, what do you talk about wanting that, you know, this, this park or that park? Or, you know, what suite of things can we do if we bought ten of these to provide shelter or shade and installed them around the community? What would that look like? And what's the cost associated with that? It's probably easier to do it in, in lumps than piecemeal if you're buying, you know, structure A to go and put around the community, right? So look to administration for some guidance on that.
Thoughts on, some capital for upgrading existing? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Um I hear through previous comments from councillor Ben Newgurk and also of others. I mean, I don't want to talk, sit on the shelf and I think it's done in the balance of our term and the next two councils as well too. So I think our council are afraid to make decisions and most have been pretty good, a couple not so good maybe. But on the whole, we're not afraid to make decisions. I think we're going to take this document and make some firm decisions. And on that note, I think it's um, because I think you mentioned about doing some of the short term things. I don't want to call them short term wins because sometimes it just sounds like it's easy and just get it done because it's easy. Uh but I do think there are some viable options in this report we could do in the next, in the fiscal year twenty twenty and improve our community. I want to talk specifically about the arts community. It's been under circling, I think, for, obviously in the next number of years. And your report made a very excellent suggestion, I thought, to uh retrofit the CC BCC facility. I'm not a committee on council about trying to make that facility more functional and more open to the community. And you mentioned approximately two hundred fifty thousand dollars in our renovation, which would include, I think, was lighting, uh, sound equipment. I mean, I'm picturing uh putting a stage there that could have performances, visual and art performances. Could you expand on a discussion you may have had with the arts community about this idea? Did it come from them? Is it coming from you, the suggestion? If it is coming from you, do you think the arts community would be interested in that? Because a facility down the road is showing here twenty twenty nine, so that's ten years from now. But I think if we could retrofit the CC BCC now, within the next year easily, I think with that number figure and give the arts community something they can, they can embrace and take advantage of and be useful to them. So how does this suggestion get into the report?
Yes, it came from an interview with the arts community, with the arts groups. And so our arts consultant, uh, Karen, she worked with them to determine what the short term needs would be, what, uh, you know, understanding that, you know, multi tens of million dollar building probably isn't going to happen tomorrow. But what can we do in the short to medium term to meet some of the performing and visual arts needs? But while at the same time, uh, meeting the broader needs for rentals and everything, like I think even if you did transition into a performing arts center in the longer, medium to long term, those enhancements that you make uh would be, uh, I guess, marketable to a broader audience and even still to the arts community after, even if a new building was built. So um th- those discussions happen with the arts community. So I would suggest though, um, further engagement to determine exactly what's needed there. Uh, you know, in the, in the short term. But that was the budget number we worked, we worked on and it, um, in our opinion, would, would meet the needs. But I think some more specific engagement on this, on that renovation would be needed.
So to, to be clear, our, our role here, and we're not making decisions on budget, but we're trying to provide direction to administration and say, yeah, we, we, we think generally that there should be um budget coming forward in twenty twenty that includes these renovations. Not to pick, we're not going to pick and choose what those renovations are, but allocate that funding for you guys to go away and do that work. So um and I want to get back to councillor Ben Newgurk's comment in a second. We skipped over it. But um, yeah, the, I guess I'll, I'll open up generally the, the, the thinking around that suggestion um from council here to, to invest some short term um in twenty twenty, some capital into that arts piece. Let's quickly com- comments on, on that.
Yes, I, I was second councillor now there on that one, absolutely. If, if we're looking for quick wins, and, and yeah, I don't want to gloss over points two, three and four. But five and six seem to be the obvious ones to me that will yield a quick win for, well, the financial amount we'd have to decide, but with our budget time. But that certainly seems to be the biggest scope. Those are all identified needs. Um and, and very obviously, there's the, um, the retrofitting of the CC BCC, which to provide a performing arts facility. The, the thing that strikes me when I look at the um, whereas in page fifty eight, the, the, the ratios of the various facilities in other communities versus the population. The thing that strikes me straight away is that there's two, the bone one supply is zero. And one of those is indoor field house, which we've already addressed, and the other one's performing arts center. And you know, before Saskatchewan, the concrete, no, they've all got a performing arts center and we've got nothing. Um that, that's an obvious deficiency that we correct, that apparently we could at least go some of the way to rectify and find quickly and affordably.
Yeah, I, I, I would support the discussion, the budget. Um we're going to have all of this divulgates that are going to come in front of us. We're going to have to, to have the more detailed discussion, but I'll support, I'll support bringing that forward. Is anyone opposed to? Okay, sorry, um, Paul, you had a comment?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I was just going to comment that perhaps if that particular item could be, when engagement piece comes back to the public, that specific item could be addressed with the arts community, just to get some more feedback specifically if that was a, if we're going to council.
If I may make that comment, thank you, Mr Chairman. A suggestion, Paul, I think my only thoughts might be um asking administration to, you know, the budget deliveries are coming up, maybe do some costing on what this number you had, two hundred fifty thousand, where that came from. I'm not too sure how fast the engagement will happen with the public before we get our budgets done for twenty twenty. So I'm sure it's coming in the near future, but I want to maybe, sorry, I would request that we ask administration to give us some ballpark numbers on what the initial discussions were with the arts community and this report saying, you know, if they, for example, want stage lights and sound system and the ballpark's two fifty, could we get some verification? Not verification, some guidelines at budget that that's a reasonable number pending public engagement and arts community having some more input. I want, I want to prefer that they kind of went hand to hand. I'm not too sure how fast the public engagement will be finished before we get our budget deliveries going. Just as observation.
So I think, actually, I think you've got what you know.
Yeah, sorry.
Just a quick question. That, that number of two hundred fifty thousand kind of reminds me from my time on the CC BCC board, that the baffling of the sound attenuation is almost that much, just for now. So I'm just a little worried that that's not going to change.
The recent.
Sorry?
Was it one hundred, hundred twenty on sound?
So it's about half of that now, so.
This would be over and above that. But this is extra tip, yes.
And so I want to, I want to move us on here. We, we don't want to get into the specifics. But generally, I think council is, is, yes, bring that back at, at budget time from an arts, to improve the arts. Any, any specific comments that, that folks wanted to dive into?
We've already addressed, we've already brought forward the, the expansion of the trial system or rather the completion of the trial system. That's what was planned as an item that we've already wanted to consider.
Yes, we're working on that already.
Yes.
To, yeah.
So yeah, so yeah, no, that, that, they're already working on that. Um so that, that work is going to come back as to what, what speed up trial system sometime. Items two and three, I'm hoping that we're uh, items two, three and four, develop a business plan. I know administration's working on the business plan right now and programming, uh, implementing new operational policies. Well, Paul's addressed that on floor, so it's just on first. Um and they've already said in terms of additional human resources, they're going to do a evaluation of their current staff and see what actually is.
Yep.
First of all, so I'm pretty happy with that. So it really leaves us just five, six and eight.
Yeah.
Can I just add on to what the mayor said about the HR number, number four? I really like seeing the support for the volunteer community. And I think it probably worked out in the competition big time. I think that's well worth our investment because I, volunteerism needs help and don't just people in our room and say, do all this, we need to have a strategic approach to that, to provide the help here from them, but on a ground level. So I really do appreciate that. And I think that's, for me, one of the high priorities would be number four.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, support the, the operational piece. Um, you know, it doesn't get the, it's not the sexy thing we can go. But I think that, that's what really builds up the infrastructure of the community. So I would certainly support that. I, I would assume administration, um, oh, I shouldn't say that. Uh, yeah, I think administration has, has heard that support and, and you'll be bringing back some of that as part of the budget process. Um so definitely support for that around the table here. Councillor Ben Newgurk.
Yeah, just backing up a bit. Does, does administration have the detail enough to, to act on number five there? We, you know, I kind of introduced it, we batted it around a bit and then we kind of shifted gears there over to CC BCC, just the enhancing existing facilities. What I'm suggesting is, you know, get it, get some targets together for, you know, to enact some of the, um, you know, improvements around those, some of those facilities and, you know, propose some stuff um to, you know, tighten things up and make them more attractive for, for guests. Is there anything more that you need from us on that item?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Unless there's something specific.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. And then I'll back up one comment that councillor Barhart there on the uh human resources and growth. There, there's a real, so the comment Mr Russo made earlier about um space and or fields in prime time being not used. I'm sure that the process we have in place is, you know, have someone working hard to do everything to the best of their abilities. But I'm greatly looking forward to some space planning resource to make sure that we are making good on all the prime time usage for our facilities. And I don't know about it, so that, you know, I've heard that from a few user groups. So, you know, that going, that's what our heart said. But somehow, I think that's going to be an important piece. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and, and so I'll, I'll go back to my earlier comments here. I want to be clear that we're not just saying, we don't want to leave administration with the thought that we just said yes to this document and executed on a hundred million dollars, right? So um can we? No. Uh so from a priorities perspective, I think we heard the, we had a good discussion about the, the cultural center and what we could do there. Um, you know, the, the trails piece is coming back. I, I, I get that. Um, are there any other specific type? Are there any other specific facilities that people wanted to discuss to make sure was included in that 2020 piece?
Well, just when you said about the administration, again, one of the things I would like to see or hear is administration's response to this document. I don't know that that's incorporated yet, like it seems to me this is still coming as your document, but I don't know, has the input of what occurred and now it's collectively your document, or is there others I'm concerned administration might want to raise now or later, and I'd like to hear those. If this is not doable in 10 years, part of me thinks it's not doable in 10 years, but if administration agrees with me or thinks it's doable in 15 years, I'd like, I'd like, you know, to hear some of their reaction to it, because they know the reality, and it doesn't have to be now.
Yeah, no, so.
When it comes back, there's an opportunity for us to have some reality check around what is affordable given the tax base we have.
Yeah, it's a fair.
Projected to have it, because we're going to continue to.
Fair question. Do you notice I assumed that this was done jointly with administration throughout the process and you wouldn't be putting it in front of us if you didn't support it, but maybe do you want to clarify that?
Yeah, the steering committee was made up of administration, various people within the city, and we're comfortable with this document in its current form as far as bringing it today. Obviously, it's ambitious, if you will, however, some of us, some of this stuff is in a quick way, some of the smaller stuff, some of the stuff we're working on now in the background and have been for some time, and council will see some of that at budget time potentially. And tonight will give us a little direction. Has the master plan, it would help just to see if there's anything that jumps out tonight that is not supported, so that we can take that back and then further, because this is the draft master plan, so it's obviously the final list that has to come based on any changes that are proposed tonight, as well as it may come through the community, come back in the community. But we're comfortable with conceptually what's in here, for sure. I don't know if it will roll out exactly as it's laid out here, but I think it gives us the blueprint to go forward.
Thank you, Ben Newkirk. The format of this, when we get it, comes to a finalist at this point, right? It's delivered like it's from a consultant, like all the other master plans, we just develop a plan, it then becomes Beaumont's plan, so the consulting stuff comes out. There's also that we still have to discuss, there's some operational pieces in here that typically we wouldn't bring to the council in the beginning, so you may see some of like the staffing, volunteering stay, like strategically, but the staff and stuff to come out, because otherwise it makes it very difficult for you to approve this document, because then you're pre-deciding what your budgets are going to be moving towards. So some wording will change in that regard as well. That was the comfort I needed, because I'm used to seeing things in a much more learning way, rather than into the detail, like this is a cultivation of implementation, and you said that, and I understand we've got to catch up. So moving quickly, it's fine, but I do see, you know, the principles, I totally agree with, you get into this detail, and I want to see all the other detail we haven't seen yet in the rest of the city's budget, so, you know, that's, that's it.
Yeah.
Just thank you.
Yeah, good question. And just a quick time check, we're an hour and a half in here, I'd like to see if we can get out through this item in the next 30 minutes, we'll see how ambitious that is, but we'll, we've got Councilor Ben Newkirk and then Councilor Stout. Follow by Councilor Danlock.
After I got through each of the pages, 18 to 25, I flipped through, connected some of the capital plan at $20,19 to see, you know, what of this plan is proposed in 2020, because that's the real, that's the stuff that's coming. I had a pretty big smile when I saw install an RV dump, $150K, 2020, and, you know, but also in there is, you know, great stability and such. Question to administration, is the climate effort to build this document, did administration have the input into the 20, into this capital plan at $20,19? You know, right now, what I would expect, you know, based upon what I've heard around the collaboration, is that we'll see these items in the 2020 or the upcoming budget cycle. Is that, is that fair, or is that not correct?
Potentially, what you're seeking in the 2020 here could go forward for sure, unless there's something that comes out of today's discussion that would prove that.
Yeah, sorry, we're in page 220. Yeah. So I would have questions around that, you know, and maybe tonight's our discussion for that, but, you know, $200K for an indoor playground, and, you know, even the $150Ks for an arena, all those kinds of things, you know, but I look forward to those discussions at budget, and, you know, we'll get there.
Yeah, I know you want, those numbers are not hard numbers, we've broken them down to detail that those are items we're going to pursue, and we will have detailed numbers and design.
So I would like to have a more specific conversation, is, you know, you brought up the indoor playground, the RV dump versus the need for the ball diamond person. So I think in order to, otherwise, administration is just going to look at a whole bunch of things that, yes, but are there things in here that we say, yeah, we want to prioritize this, and we're not making decisions on budget, but we want you to bring back more specific costs? What is in that capital plan that is, that isn't there for 2020 that you would like to see as council, or what is in there that you probably, that you don't, that you don't think is a direct priority for us? Is that a fair question? I'll start it off. No, you're right.
No, for me, I think it's more that, and I've seen this happen in the past with the, we have the consultant team that comes in and provides us with the input, then provides us with input, councils recommend this somewhat, and ultimately debates begin and things don't get done. So that'd be my concern. I understand the package, I read it, I understand it, I like the capital layout, is it, is it to the nickel, absolutely not? I get that, but it's a plan, and the last one wasn't followed, hoping this one will be. Let's, let's at least get to the first budget cycle, and we're going to say yes to the one admin is suggesting can be, is doable, and start moving things around, we move everything around, and that turns into just a lot of issues that we don't fully understand how the consultant team got here with all the discussions and the meetings and everything else. So I'm very happy that it's here, I'm very happy that it's coming to budget, I'm very happy that we debate the budgetary issue at the time, but that's where I like to leave it, I wouldn't want to start going into it.
Okay, there, for me, there are a couple of things in here that aren't in the capital plan that I'd like to have the discussion about, but I saw Councilor Danlock's hand up first, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if we're looking on round number five, existing facilities are still there, I understand, so if I may.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, thank you. If I may, just in the report, the existing football field behind the high school, recently my attention, I wasn't aware of it fully, that is actually city property. I always thought it was part of Blackhole School Division, but it's not, it's actually city property. And at the present time, local football, their home field is actually in Millwood, so you can't play on the field in Beaumont because it's not up to adequate safety standards and what the school board determined, same with the Beaumont amount of football, they require, and that for a whole football field. So there's also, people play rugby use that field, outdoor lacrosse use that field as well, but it is city property, and so it's our responsibility to maintain it and prove it as necessary for the futures of our community. Question is, it's not in your report at all, I'm not sure if you're aware of the city property, if you weren't aware of it, that's, that's fine, if you weren't aware of it, it wasn't really part of the recommendations on the facility. So the question I may have is, for administration, for budget, if we could have, if part of a budget process, coming from administration to council budget, recommendations, ideas on improving that field, there's talk of possibly making it into a turf field, which would be a 2025-year field, it's not inexpensive to do that, but it makes it feel very viable for any different user groups, or whatever plan may be to upgrade that field and make it much more manageable in terms of safety for the players, as well as making it an actual field our home teams can play on. That's something that's come up in other systems around town, and Beaumont's lacking in that particular area, football field, hockey, rugby, and the field, so let's have discussion with that particular field, I may.
Yeah, Councilor Hendricks?
Yourship, or Mr. Chair, that specific item, of course, has gone through quite a process, including a full design, full track, full seating arrangement, football field style type drainage requirements. There was, the last time we went through that process, we were working with school and school trustees on this. Certainly, the school trustees had talked about us getting together yet again with this council to talk about, you know, priorities and things that we can work together on. That was one of them, and I know we've talked about meeting with our school trustees, I'm sure this would be on the agenda, I think we could just resurrect the entire consultant package for that design, and it had been clustered once before, we could bring it back and see what we have today, so.
I think that's something that could be addressed in the master plan as well, not just budget. That's something we need to address.
Sure, it was a previous plan already done.
Yeah, track, the fact that, full track.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, so my two cents on that is, you listed off a bunch of sports, and so obviously it helps the football program, it helps, you know, the rugby program after school going out there, but the other things that it checks off outside of this is a safety perspective. The field is pretty unsafe right now, it's rock hard, I know the people who play and train on it, they don't use sections of it because they're worried someone's going to run out. So from a safety perspective, I think that's something that we really need to invest in, but also from, you know, we're trying to be out there, trying to encourage people to come into Beaumont. I think, you know, having the football team playing here, hosting most games here, you know, that just brings in people into our community, as opposed to them going out and meeting up in Millwood, and people spending their money in Millwood. So it checks off so many boxes for me. I think this was one of the things that I would like to see prioritized in the plan, is, and doing this properly, I think there is an opportunity to get significant revenue back in from renting that field, from surrounding communities. If we do it right, we spend the money to retrofit that field, astroturf properly. So I think, to me, this one checks a lot of boxes that's not in here, I would like to see that concur with Councilor Danlock's comment. There is definitely a discussion with the school board, the number one thing that was identified was a lack of space, land, well, this is land we got, right? And we can dig down and retrofit it and clean it up, and I think it'll be a huge addition to our community. So I certainly support that, and I'd be interested in other people's comments around the table.
Totally supportive as well, and it has come up many times, I've raised it, I've had the safety issues raised, and I don't, I can't remember the last time why you didn't get it or needed to go, but it did have something to do with the cooperation, and you say we own the land, but they are using the land, so I think there's something in there that we have to get through.
Yeah, so the school itself, the school proper, the high school is sitting on.
Yes, reserve.
Well, yeah, this reserve is, it's a section for school, Four Seasons Park stands on its own, and then, so the weapon was that we put the school onto that field, so you can back onto it and use the entire park, not just for football, but they also do all of that, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not going to, yeah, everybody said they got the top support.
Okay, and the one thing I would add is, it's not just not to rely on administration here, there are several people in the community who have got a lot of experience in this and want to volunteer their time to help, and this is the same with anything, I know that goes down an interesting path for administration, but I think we want to make sure that we make, we offer up opportunities to help folks in the community who are passionate about this to be involved, and this goes for everything, but sports and recreation committee for sure is definitely the way to go. So I guess I've seen my piece on that, it sounds like you've got seven nods here that we would like to see a detailed, maybe that's too specific a word, but some sort of plan on how we could execute this for the 2020 budget cycle. I'd like to have a discussion about how we pay for that in a second here, but any other comments on that, that particular space, Councilor Ben Newkirk?
Yeah, just very encouraging that there's already stuff together, and I wasn't sure that's used to me, and I'm happy to hear that, so I hope that helps the process to have a fruitful conversation.
Yeah, my comment, my final comment on this is, let's do it properly. There are various levels of astroturf that you can do for the football slash soccer field slash everything else that you can play on that field. I think there is huge value in spending the money and doing it right, and, you know, getting that high quality to attract people into our community to rent that field, so looking forward to that discussion. In terms of cost, obviously that, that, we don't know the numbers, and we're not going to find out the numbers here today, but I'd like to have a discussion around how we propose to pay for that. I think clearly identified in this report is that recreation is a huge deficit in our community, and so there are, there are ways that we pay for this, we've got obviously our federal gas tax, we've got significant reserves in different areas, so without getting into the specifics, I'd be interested in having that conversation about where we think administration could potentially pull from to be able to pay for this in the 2020 budget.
Yeah, and not to get into the weeds, but, you know, we also had the, you know, the baseball guys in years ago suggested, hey, throw some lights, and then we can, you know, play dark later into the night, right, because we're dark, so they, we had a couple of fields that we looked at and priced to see if we could still lighting in, so that there's more than one game that evening on that diamond, so some of the scheduling.
If you're starting to get into funding sources, we're starting to get into budget rates, so I think you're.
No, what, so what I'm trying to get here, I want administration to have a clear direction on how they think they can fund this, that we know that we cannot fund this 100% through taxes and tax increases, because I don't think that's going to be sustainable. So maybe I'll throw it over to Mike, have you thought about options on how we could potentially do this?
What I would suggest is we bring back the plan with a budget and a budget source, where we believe that money can come from, whether it's, I've got all the reserve balances in front of me right now, and figure out which way we make this work, we would come back with some options. I certainly didn't see it as being 10% tax increase to pay for that stuff, see it being predominantly reserved and grant funded, but let us develop a strategy for that.
Yeah, I guess my, my comment then, with that, we don't want to get into the discussion, I would like us to take, to see what we have in the reserves and from a grants perspective, and I know you're going to, you're going to dive into that, so I appreciate that. Councilor Danlock?
Thank you for coming with that. I've got a next topic.
Danlock, Phil, thank you.
If I may, thank you for my conversation, but I'll just pause you here for a moment. So on this idea of item five, existing facilities, it's not existing, but it could be, I've just got clarified, it could be land east of the Colonial School, it's been a, it's a reserve for a number of years, it's been sitting there, a couple of school boards have digs, if you will, on building a possible school site there, and nothing has happened. I'm wondering if we can update council potentially on where we're at with, if the school boards are going to relinquish that land back to us, let us use something for, it could be another ball diamond, it could be a rather large park, it could be all kinds of things, but right now it's sitting there empty, and it's been there a number of years, and the school boards aren't building a school there. And so I like the idea, if we, Colonial School, to give them one last shot and say, you want this, or we're going to change designation.
Yes, we do do that, we set the limits of the school board. Unfortunately, you don't have all the school boards willing to say no to that site until they've exhausted every possible opportunity that they have. So for instance, our right-hand school board, they're operating in a commercial, they're going to down, so they're ready, until they get an actual site, like, fully against their business, they would be prepared to accept something like that, and not care to keep that off the table until something else comes up, or something like this, and unfortunately the pace of development, we're on the level of some of those ones, review, has a school site, it has been identified by the right-hand school board, they're going to, or have a area of structure, to date, have had a couple, interesting, so we have not officially moved the question, they're not on the plan, so they're going to work that bit, on the site.
Yeah, I appreciate, if I may, I appreciate the answer, Ms. Raymond, and I don't want to take any more council time, it's an interesting topic today, I have some opinions on that, of course, strong ones, obviously, but I understand the process, and it's been a long time, I get that, but part of me says, we are, mayors, we are so much landlocked in many ways, so these are nice things, and not being utilized is frustrating, and we have user groups who could use it for many different things, so I won't have any more on that bigger topic today, but I do appreciate the answer, that I hope we will have them commit themselves soon to, we can use that land for a higher purpose for ourselves.
So I may go down that road further, because that's an important discussion, but.
I don't think you can dominate, but, yeah, so I'm going to push it a little bit further, you know, I'd like to know when they're going to come back to us with a plan to use that space, you know, we need to, we need to get something going here, and I think it's the easy thing to say right now, is that we're not willing to really push that space, and I think we're done with the easy answers, or we're done with the easy answers, and I want to see a plan from them, but, you know, when are they going to come back with a plan to use that space? Is that real? Is that realistic option at this point? Maybe it's a question for you.
Well, okay, go ahead, Donald.
Which side are we? School sites are probably the initial funding elements. Funding needs to come from the board. And until that does happen, maybe some will have to extend its budget cycle. But this funding hasn't existed, partly because current council board was looking for a larger site and we actually had available at the time. Right now, they're saying that it didn't have a site available for them. They didn't even have a plan to allow them to go on a smaller footprint. Now, we are actively working with them to find suitable location. I know that part of the direction that was provided back to Justin and his team wants to look at some of these different options for me. I know you can have them examined and reviewed. But at this point, because a lot of these things are, we are pushing, we're working with them. We're pushing to get decisions to be made from the rest.
Thank you.
Mike, you wanted to say something?
No, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think we've got a budget coming up here, a provincial budget coming up here in a month or so, or a couple of weeks. I would like us to re, to get back into that, into that conversation. I guess the question would be if that site, if that particular area somewhere in Colonial, I think where Council Danlock is going is there is an opportunity there. They're not gonna use it, opportunity for a different use, whether it be ball document or what have you. Have you looked at that? And if that space became available, I still struggle with that. But if that space became available, what would we look at placing there from your perspective?
Yeah, we are looking at that space for sure. We've been seeing what could fit in that space, whether it's a ball diamond or soccer field, for sure. That's part of our implementation piece that will come subsequent to the master plan as far as the blank field allocation and locations throughout the community.
Okay. Council Beniker, you want to?
Well, you probably already know that we all agree we need schools. So to me, that's, yes, I would like more baseball diamonds, et cetera. But if the schools can get the money to build a school with this land, that has priority. We can have enough schools. So and that's, these are those Murphy's, you know.
But they're holding us, they don't want that spot. They're holding us hostage.
Well, they have their.
They can leave them a better spot. So and I get stuck with, I'm the councilman, I get stuck when they're starting to hold us hostage to try and negotiate a better position. Like if they don't want it, it's not gonna either eat. Yeah, but let it go, and we will work with them to get the spot they need.
I'm not privy to that this conversation, so I don't know if they're holding us hostage. I'm just saying from my point of view, schools are important. So it's not, I don't want to pick between a ball field and a, we're not saying that in a school, but we have to win those as well, so.
I guess on that point, I guess I'll possess the light as my colleagues, because I'm frustrated as well with the situation. Because I'm aware that the school boards have said this is not big enough to build a site for a school. Now, they're in the capital plan to make it fit. That means they've got to go vertical. They can't go any wider for the school, right? The question, if they want a second and third story school, doesn't matter to us. But they've been having that land for well, for 10 years now, and they've done nothing with it. And it is potential funding, I get that, but they've already stated that the land's not big enough to build a school. So sitting in limbo. So thank you, Mr. Raymond, for pushing, and I do appreciate your pushing even harder as best you possibly can. But it's something on the link, it's on our, it's on our radar for sure. And schools are important, yes, but it's been 10, 12 years and nothing's happened.
I'm gonna move us on here. Good discussion. We'll wait to hear further back on that. Any other specifics around the community that people? I think one that stood out to me was the multi-use outdoor facility that we have right now on the reservoir there. There was a potential suggestion to move it kind of next door. And I think just over 500K in the capital budget plan to add a new line on that, next door to that. So I'd be interested in some discussion about that multi-use outdoor facility there. I'll maybe I'll go to the mayor, because I know he's very passionate about this.
Yeah, well, we already have, like, we already have the budget to just pick it up and move. And I, and Mr. Chair, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that we've had some discussions with Baha online. They want, they have some money to put in towards a mortgage ring that could be a possibility. We talked about locations with them, and Council Row was my thing. I think the facility you're talking about needs a much bigger piece of land than just picking up what's there.
And that's where I want to go. I'd like to have a conversation about that. I've seen them be very successful and hear from the user groups and individuals about the success of those multi-use outdoor things. But again, it's a, you need to invest the 500K into it as opposed to the 50K to jump it over. So, Council Beniker?
Just to point you, my question is very similar. I think we have 50K in the budget right now to move it over. It was a carryover. My question was around, does this have to come back to us, the budget now, because putting boards around it makes it beyond the 50K? I think that's probably what happens, but just looking for some clarification to admit on that. I don't know if we didn't change our minds. I think it costs more, but just comments written in.
Yeah, a little thought that we provide our administration is if you haven't started the project, the project goes back into the kitty for the next year, so it's not automatically carried forward. If the project is started, we call it ongoing. In this case, this project won't be started. So the scope's gonna change. We'll re-scope it and re-estimate it and bring that back.
So I'd like to pull on more about the mayor's comments about, you know, working with the user groups you mentioned, Baha. How realistic is it to have that conversation about where that potential site could be coming up into the, for the 2020 budget cycle?
Mr. Chair, it's very realistic. I've had conversations with them, and they're just taking it back to their membership to see if it's still a project that they want to fund. That's what's happening.
Okay, so I think you've got a lot of nods around the table here that we would look forward to seeing a potential solution for that. Yes, go ahead, Mike.
I just want to add, let's not put ourselves in too tight of a vice here on timeline. We can put a placeholder in the budget with details to follow and subject to council approval later on. So if we can't get all the public consultation, we can't get a design in place by the time we improve the budget, we can just put it on shelf.
Yeah.
And still get it done in 2020.
Thanks for the, yeah, put it on the shelf and still get it done, yeah.
We're talking a month before we can finish scoping and then.
Yeah, so I guess I think what you're hearing from councils, there are some short-term things that we'd like to see in the capital's budget. You're hearing that from us. And do we need to see the full design in place by budget? No, but the general concept, yes. Council Beniker?
Just staying on that same stride, but a little bit of a different ask. What I've seen in some other communities, and if it's in here, I missed it, sorry, Justin, is some portable boards used. So right now, in our, in this project, we have kind of the dirt berm that contains the water for making some sheets of ice. But, you know, those are contained or constrained by any boards of some kind. I have seen other communities where they'll take a flat piece of land, and then they'll have some boards in front of it for winter and flood them and then use them. And then when it's time for them to come down on thaw. Was any of that idea included in here?
Still not level in detail. Yeah, we already had 140 actions, we do another 141. So no, we didn't actually look at that specific idea, but it's not, it's not gonna happen.
By some, by some members in the community around that. And so that would be something that I would, I would like to see costing back on in this budget cycle is what it takes to, you know, purchase that section of boards and a group of a set of boards that, you know, you can put up and take down and flood it out. I'm not saying that we need five of them, you know, but it'd be nice to have at least understand what the cost of putting one of those sets of boards up would be. So I don't know what council's appetite is for that, but I think that is, keeping kids from chasing them just don't make for bucks.
Yeah, so that's one angle. The other angle is for those of us who can't stop and need boards to hold off.
They broke a wrist that way.
Yeah, so speaking from experience, so, yeah, my thoughts on that, yeah, I'd like to see that. I don't think that's too much of an ask to bring back for us, to see how we could prioritize some of that. We didn't break those facilities around, and it'd be good to see what that cost would do for our community.
I appreciate that it's pretty detailed tonight, but I think that if we get it on the table tonight, then at least we can get looking for what.
Okay.
Just wondering if we've covered enough. There's a lot of detail in the whole parks and open space area. And I don't know enough about biopods and other issues. I know there are concerns about that. So I'm just wondering, this doesn't really tie our hands in any way. It's more or less going in a direction, more will come back, the details, is that your assumption? I can't, at this point, based on what's here, say I agree on this review of the summer's plans.
I would agree. I do have one comment about the parks and trails piece. And it ties into the dog park conversation. I think it's, you know, there is a significant need for, you know, we'd like to have the Twilaga Dog Park in our community. But the reality is we don't have that space. So I'd like us to entertain a conversation about using some existing spaces as a trial run, knowing the need for, to be able to have some off-leash spaces. See how the communities around the capital region who do this, they kind of turn parks and some of them turn them into off-leash spots during the winter when there's less kids and stuff running out there. But I'm interested in seeing if council has an appetite to see if we could identify a couple of sites in our communities, some parks, some existing trails, where we could potentially trial off-leash this winter and see what comes back with that. I think that would, that would help, obviously, the dog park need. It's not the ultimate solution. But I think I'd be interested in having that conversation here about how we could use some existing trails and parks to trial that run. Council Beniker?
First thing that comes to mind for me is engage with me that we're on the temporary dog park tour we're on right now. And there were a couple of other viable spots at that time. I'm not surprised they weren't selected at that time by residents, but they were. So that might be a good place to start, you know, looking at the liability of those two sites, which, you know, engagement's already been done on, because then we don't have to go out and remap and re-engage. And we've already, we've already done that. So much of those other two spots, like, might be an easy start, easy place to start.
So what I'm talking about is not fencing it, putting up a temporary fence. I'm talking about using an existing trail and saying, okay, around kind of this particular area, this park, right in the winter, you can throw your ball for your dog, right? And I'll use the one just because it's where I go by, you know, that space via the Purple Slide Park and Colonial Park, right? Like, is that, and I'm not saying that's where we're going, I'm just saying, using that as an example where people are constantly walking the dogs in the winter. It's beautifully maintained now along those trails, and folks in the winter, particularly with less kids, do we give that a trial run, some of those, somewhere in the community to look at that and get some data on that, right? I know the concern is, well, people aren't gonna pick up after themselves, say deal, that sort of stuff. But to me, if you're not gonna pick up, pick up after your pet, you're not gonna do it with their own leisure off-leash, if you're that type of owner. So I just thoughts on, from people around here, to trial that in a couple of spots. It may be successful, it may not be, but I think that's a way to get some spaces for some of these dogs who need to rip around and not have to drive into the city to be able to do that.
That one spot's over at the reservoir where we could have proposed to fence, that's a big spot. And there's probably no reason that that could be an off-leash spot as well. So, you know, we'd have to look to, and to get their comments on that, but it's a big spot. It's over there, it's available. So that might fit a bit as well.
Yeah, and even the big trails in behind, like the old square box that Beaumont used to be, you know, the trails in behind the golf course and all the way around, right? Like, I'd like to see if there are sections that we could potentially trial that and make sure, obviously, we notify one about it. But, you know, on 243, there's a long path there that dogs could be off-leash. So I'm just trying to find a way to, the mayor is frowning here, so I'll jump in.
I'm scared.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm not totally gonna do it, but part of it, when you can, I'd have to balance that, the need of the off-leash park with the need of the other users. Because it's lots of people that want to walk on the trails that don't want to be accosted by dogs off. And you're talking about, yes, you think those. So unless, unless there's a lot more detail, I'd be very hesitant to do that right now, to just pick some spots. You go, you're off-leash for the winter in a toy team and stuff. So I would need some authorization before I can get mine.
You know, when you mention the Colonial and you're looking around, I go, it's quite often that. It's really no help for you on the other side if a dog does come up to you, you know, other than the owner of the dog. So that would be a place where I would suggest it.
Yeah, and.
And I don't know what places, but I'd want to consult heavily before that was.
So what I'm trying to do, the dog park was clearly identified as a need here from the community, right? We don't have the space right now. So if we don't, if we don't do this, and if someone's got another option. So again, we saw the success, limited success of those. So if there's not support from council to do it, that's fine with me. I just, I think we need to try and find a way to help these, the dog owners as well. Council staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And now I have big reservations about sending up sections of the trail to be off-leash dog areas. And yes, people certainly do, that their dogs are off-leash in some, at times, but in those areas. But I'm concerned for all the other users there. Certainly, if I'm using, if I'm riding a bike, I do not want to be worrying about off-leash dog chasing thing. That's, and they do. That's, I'd certainly have all sorts of safety concerns. And if we need more, I'm sympathetic to the idea that we need more off-leash, we need space, off-leash space for dogs. But I'd support Cass' funding suggestion that we look at some of the alternate sites that have already been identified.
Council Beniker?
It's one of the things that I've, like, I think you've, I think you're 100% accurate with, you know, when we can expect a fenced off area dedicated for a park along with. One of the things I've seen, you know, traveling around in other communities is, you know, along the path, I don't know how they got there, but along the path, you'll see a sign, you're now entering an off-leash dog area. And then you'll be two blocks long, and then you're now accessing an off-leash dog area. So it does work, and it has worked in other these paths. How they got there, I don't know, you know, consultation and this and that. But somewhere along the line, they were able to get to a point where there was some kind of a solution. And then they tried it, and I don't know how they got there, how to look to him. Expertise on figuring out how we could get there. When I look at the east side town on that trail, I'm liable to learn often. I don't think I see a bunch of dogs on the shore very pretty. So it's one of those things that, you know, maybe we could, you know, I would support looking at something because it's gonna be a long time for, in my view, it's gonna be a long time before we have a spot that we're gonna be able to say, this is where you can take your off-leash dog, off-leash dogs. And it certainly is not gonna live up to some of the other options in the surrounding area that work all the time compared to. So that's my support is there to look for options.
Yeah, so I'm happy, and maybe I got, well, not maybe, I got too specific there. I think that intimidated folks. I think what I'd like to see is for us to, for administration to go and take a look at some of the existing spaces that we have to potentially provide some other opportunities for off-leash spaces. Is there any?
Yeah.
Yeah, is there anyone opposed to that? Given the list of priorities that we're throwing at the administration? It says long term, and I'm asking to define some shorter term solutions.
Yeah, we're trying to save me some short, some short term.
And I'm not gonna sign off on it tonight, but you want, we don't.
No, it's not, not what anyone's asking for, or maybe I sort of was. Okay, I'm happy, yeah, I'm happy to move on. We're at a time check, we're at 7 o'clock. Are there other items, things that people wanted to bring forward? I've got Council Danlock here, just trying to get a gauge.
It's a short one, Mr. Chair. I would suggest maybe on page 220, the capital plan 2019 dollars, the items that are listed here, update park furniture 10,000, enhance park open space vegetation 15, upgrade outdoor sport facilities 25 on the next page, upgrade baseball diamonds 10,000. I would suggest that we have administration read those four items back to budget to be debated accordingly at that time. Rather than taking any time tonight to do it. Our four items are that are identified by the report as being a short term item that have some merit, but I would suggest we debate it at budget as opposed to tonight, those four items.
Okay.
I think all of the capital plan, all has to come back in budget.
It's a short term.
Yeah, it's good to see what was in mind, but I think it really is too soon to be making those.
Okay. Given that we're at 7:05 here, it looks like we're closed. Can I have a motion to accept this report and presentation's information? Council staff?
So I'm moved, Mr. Chair.
Call the vote?
Aye.
Good discussion. I'm gonna call on recess here. You wanna go to camera and then recess? Okay, so we've got two items in camera coming up here. So closed session, item A here, due to, so regional items, update regional transit EMOB initiatives, close session pursuant to section 21 of the Freedom of Information Protection and Privacy Act, harmful to internal governmental relations, and pursuant to section 24, the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Advice from Officials. Can I have a motion to go over camera? Counselor, sorry, your worship, and call the vote? Thanks for your time. Appreciate you sitting through all that.
Thank you very much. Great report. Pleasant information. My head still hurts.
No, it was good. I loved it.